Good morning. Welcome to this first regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen for the month of April. Please rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to the meeting. There are copies of the agenda on the table as you come in with the materials that will be discussed in public session. Today's meeting consists of a number of interviews, beginning at 11 o'clock, for positions on various town boards and commissions. Item number two is approval of minutes. These are from the meeting, the second meeting, in the month of March. I don't obtain any corrections, adjustments. Item number three, updates. On Wednesday, April 3rd, I was invited to speak to the Greenwich Rotary. I had about thirty members in attendance. The context of it was really update on issues in town. The primary focus of the remarks centered on the fact that we are a community dependent upon volunteers, and that the health of our community really is predicated on active civic engagement. And so long as that continues, and that is an integral part of our system of government, we should be in good shape. Lot of questions about different projects, taxes, what one thinks about future aspirants, which I declined to comment. But anyhow, they're a great group. They had a good turnout, and I'd recommend anybody who's interested in doing charitable work. They do quite a bit of work in disadvantaged countries throughout the globe, providing medical equipment, setting it up, as well as work within our community to support children, economically disadvantaged children and youth. So, thank you to the Rotary. On Monday, there was a presentation given to the RTM. This was in response to the SOMAR, which is a sense of the meeting resolution that was overwhelmingly adopted in September of 2018. The presentation was one that was previously given to the Board of Estimant and Taxation. It is one that you can find online if you wish to review it. It is also one in which questions that were generated from viewing the presentation are being submitted, and we're going to consolidate them and provide responses. But it was really a chance to give the RTM an opportunity for a bit more attention on the subject, which they are, in fact, an integral part of since the adoption of the SOMAR in September. I do want to thank the professional staff, again, publicly. I want to thank the representatives from District 10, who were in attendance, who have helped generate people's interest to come and listen. I would have liked to have seen more people, to be blunt. At the same time, as I looked out, it's not unlike a lot of our meetings. Those interested were obviously, my estimation, my opinion, supportive, and then I recognize perhaps a few skeptics, and maybe we changed their point of view. But we will continue to inform, educate, and lobby right up until the very end. And this is, again, to secure the necessary funding to do site assessment for a JEMs and fire station in northwest Greenwich. Again, it's, the presentation is online. If you go into budget documents, I believe we put it under that tab, but if you just search for northwest Greenwich fire protection, dash, fire response, final report, presentation 24, 2019, you should find it. And perhaps I can appeal to our local news outlets to take the presentation and link it, so that people can more easily access it, for those who don't look at our website but like to look at you folks. Tuesday. Tuesday was a busy day. We had the pleasure of welcoming the Lieutenant Governor for the State of Connecticut, Susan Beisewitz, to Greenwich. We were at the Greenwich Library for Promotion of Census 2020. This is an effort on the part of the state government to work with their municipalities in bringing about awareness to the importance of having a complete count. Those of us who have been involved in government circles recognize that many of the dollars that are allocated to municipalities, allocated to the state, are dependent upon the census. And having a complete count is critically important for many, many reasons. Economic is certainly one. Political representation is certainly another. For every individual that is counted, it reflects, I believe, $2,900 that would be allocated to the state. We use the library because libraries, as Barbara Omarag Glenn indicated, are places of neutrality. They are not only institutions of knowledge and information, they're one where people feel welcome. We were pleased to be hosted by the Greenwich Library and its correspondent branches, which are playing an integral part in providing access for people to go in and go online and fill out the questionnaires that will be required. We were joined in this event, this presentation, by Senator Alex Berkstein, from the state, who spoke. David Raben, from Greenwich United Way, who is leading an organization that identifies needs in our community, does a needs assessment, identifies sources of funding to satisfy those needs. Mary Lee Kirnman, from the YWCA, represented really all of our not-for-profit community in speaking to the importance that she sees in having a complete count. We had Bobby Walker, from the Boys and Girls Club, as well as Selectment owner, Town Clerk Buckins, and Tax Collector Richmond, along with Gabby Ratner, from Community Centers, Inc. So we had a fairly good turnout. Actually, we had representatives from the Greenwich Police Department Public Information Office, because in the spring of 2020, people will begin going door-to-door to help inform and get the complete count. It was told to us that if someone is looking to earn some income, they're hiring people. You can go to Census 2020. They pay $25 an hour. And again, one of the suggestions, two suggestions came up that day, which I thought were very good. One was, how do we utilize our school community through Parent Link? And I suggested we engage Kim Eves, who's the communications person for the public school district, to help communicate. And then, two, our tax collector had a very good idea, which is to include an insert in the tax bills, as we often do, to inform people of the importance of this. So he passed that along to Lieutenant Governor Beisewitz, who's going to work with the Connecticut Tax Collectors Association, to realize that. So more to be reported, but this is, this is a committee information, so I would welcome anybody who wants to help in this endeavor. It's come one, come all. It's in our collective interest that we get the best count of our population, because it's going to serve all of us well.
One very alarming statistic to me was the number of people that are marginal here in the town of Greenwich, 17,000 people. Was that the number that was mentioned? Yeah, 17,000 people that David Raben mentioned.
That's, thank you. It shows you are paying careful attention. Asset limited income constrained and employed, plus those below the federal government's income poverty standard. You were there as well, so you and Leslie both. So, again, I think it's important to keep people apprised of why we do this. It's not, it's a very critical undertaking. That afternoon, something very unfortunate occurred on the King Street corridor, and I have to tell you, it's the type of news, when you hear it, your heart goes into your throat. The initial incident was reported to me as a school bus crash. Just hearing that, I think we all have the same chilling feeling. Needless to say, gathering ourselves, we trekked up to King Street, because I think it's important for, certainly myself and the position I presently hold, to see firsthand what has taken place. It took us quite a while to get there, and I think we did our best to illustrate it. Barbara Hines joined me. And as we were stopped in the traffic, we were able to take a picture of what we were sitting in, in the line of traffic from King Street down Cliffdale Road stretch, I would say, at least for a mile. We got out to King Street in the diverting traffic down Cliffdale Road. All you folks know Cliffdale Road. It's one you've got to really pay attention on. It just so happened that this incident occurred just before dismissal time at the, at the private schools. So you can imagine, traffic on an ordinary day, we hear about it. Take out the major artery, King Street, which was closed due to the accident, and you had quite a snarl, which lasted over several hours, because by the time we arrived there, we were approaching 5:00. So Cliffdale Road was backed up. King Street was obviously backed up because of the diversion. And it all really raises the question of, how do you get to people in that area when first responder is so far away? Not to overly politicize the incident, but those are just facts. What I wanted to say about the incident, and really give acknowledgement to, are those professional staff, medical, at the Brunswick School and Good Samaritans, that responded when they heard the crash. They went to the scene. The crash involved ten people. There was one person driving a smaller school bus on his way to pick up students at the convent, or Sacred Heart, as it's referred to. And the other bus was a New York County bus, carrying people with disabilities. And that was quite alarming, because their stress level in situations that are not in control is very heightened. And this became an additional challenge, from what I read, to treating the injuries. But fortunately, from what we know, there were serious injuries, but everyone survived. It speaks to, though, coming back to it, the volume, the density, and the activity that's occurring in that area. And I'll look forward to getting a more thorough assessment from those who were there. But needless to say, it was an upsetting incident, very upsetting. The last thing here is, the last thing is, the Greenwich Economic Forum, the second one, is now firmly set. The dates for that are November 5th and 6th, 2019. That is to be held at the Delmar. It is being run by the Greenwich Business Institute, and this year, the Financial Times is undertaking the promotion and scheduling and event management. Last year, there were 369 attendees, 38 CEOs, 25 CIOs, and 20 founders. So again, thank you to the folks who are working that. We received confirmation that Bridgewater CEO Ray Dalio will be participating, David Rubenstein, CEO of the Carlyle Group, and Mark Lazry, CEO of Avenue Capital, as a start. There'll be 100 distinct institutional investors, with assets under management well over 5 trillion. So again, you'll, you'll hear more about this as time goes on, but I do want to thank those folks who are undertaking it. That completes the updates. We have, under old business, a follow-up to several items from our March 28th meeting. There were three topics discussed, as it related to an incident that occurred, for which we were seeking to gather questions. The board voted to, one, ask the town attorney to address the legalities of the issue, in terms of right to privacy, public buildings. And, two, for us to begin the process of looking at improvements, safeguards, and protections, so an incident as so occurred could not happen. In addition, my dear colleague here had requested we do an investigation. Since that meeting, the, there has been, I believe, two, two parties who have filed formal complaints with the Greenwich Police Department, so there is actively an investigation taking place. And so, with regard to the idea of investigating, it is now with the local law enforcement. If I may, Mr. Lippack did request today the following, and he was requested to have on the agenda, new business, a motion seeking to have the Board of Selectmen appoint a special three-person committee to investigate the circumstances surrounding the secret recording that took place on September 21 in the Cone Room, so as to recommend to the board steps to be taken by the town to ensure against such recording in the future. In addition, he would like a report in response to legal questions posed to him by the first selectman at that meeting. So in terms of agenda, there is no new business. We only have one item of old business. It's a subject that's come up before. That's why it was put there. And with regard to the investigation, we've since received an email from one of the people who filed a complaint, asking us the following. "Good morning. I saw that in today's meeting, their agenda has an old business item related to town attorney's response to the right to privacy and town hall use, town hall issue. Since the board failed to pass a motion to investigate my and others' complaints at the 3/28 meeting, I did as was suggested by you and filed a complaint with the police department, as I believe at least one other victim of Mr. Dedakis's harassment and online bullying did as well. It may be inappropriate for the town attorney to speak in public meeting on the legality of this issue while a criminal investigation is pending." And this was sent by Melissa Evans. So, I would have the town attorney just opine on that fact, but what we did receive, under attorney-client privilege, is the very thing that I requested and Mr. Lippack referenced, which is an update from the town attorney on that specific piece. So I think of this in terms of three pieces. The investigatory part, the legality part, and then, what are we going to do going from here, in terms of process improvement? We also do have that, and I know Mr. Marzullo is here. He is with Greenwich Community Television. He has been, since his tenure as selectman, and has continued on a volunteer basis, so.
Good morning. Good morning. Let me address, if I could initially, the suggestion that this go into executive session. Under the Connecticut General Statutes, dealing at 1-200, there are a limited number of situations under which one may go into executive session. And historically, the FOI Commission has always treated that very carefully, very conservatively, and very narrowly. I think the sections that might be applicable to the question that was posed would come under 1-200 subsection 6, which talks about strategy and negotiations with respect to pending claims or pending litigation. The statute then goes on to address how it defines a pending claim or a pending litigation. And it would involve litigation, if it was pending against the town, it would involve claims that were filed against the town, none of which exist at this point in time. I think the question is a fair one, and the other arguable one, arguable claim, would be under 1-210 of the Connecticut General Statutes. 1-210 lists a whole series of 24, 25 items that would not be, or should not be disclosed. And part of it, under subparagraph 3, talks about records of law enforcement agencies. And it exempts a certain number of specific items. And that would be the identity of informants, the identity of minor witnesses, signed statements of witnesses, information, information to be used in a prospective law enforcement action, if prejudicial to such action, investigatory techniques, and arrest records. With respect to what has been presented to your group, that lists the potential crimes that might be put forward here by a police department on some future, future date. It is not our intention, or do I think it is yours, to go into the specifics of whether or not this fact pattern fits within any one of those crimes. But my, my understanding, what you wanted me to, to produce for you, was an outline of potential crimes that theoretically might be involved here. It is not my intention, nor do I think it is yours, to discuss the specific fact patterns involved here with respect to criminal action of the police department. So my response to your, to your specific question is, I do not see the basis that would be sustainable of challenged for this board to go into executive session, for those particular, alleged criminal acts.
Understood. And speaking, I, I'm not questioning that. I trust your legal advice on that. I just wanted to make public, though, the fact that we did have a request from someone specific to consider that.
What I have attempted to do, per the direction of this board when we last met, was to put together an outline of the concept of invasion of privacy, and a claim that one may make in conjunction therewith, to outline, you, with respect to the civil law, what the law is in the State of Connecticut, and what the standards are, with respect to such a claim. And that is what I have attempted to do in the memo that was provided to you. In addition to that, as I've just previously mentioned, with respect to the potential for a criminal violation, are there statutes which define certain acts which might theoretically come with under, come under what has been alleged have occurred here? And I have attempted to outline that for you in the same memo. I'm happy to address any questions you may have with respect to that. It doesn't make a lot of sense for me to read it to you. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have in conjunction with that issue.
You had talked previously, I think, in terms of civil versus criminal, and distinguishing between the two. Again, we have people here who are lawyers, but then we have those who are not. Perhaps you could just elaborate and give the context of the distinction between the two.
The civil aspect of the memo relates to the potential for a civil cause of action by one of the folks that had been offended by what took place. And it talks in terms of the elements of any such claim. As I think I mentioned when we were last together, Connecticut is one of the few states that does not have statutory authority right to privacy. The Supreme Court has outlined, the Supreme Court has dealt with it in a case that goes back to the 1980s, which is, which the court has recognized the right to privacy under certain fact patterns. There are four of them in particular. What they call an unreasonable intrusion upon the seclusion of another, appropriation of another's name or likeness, unreasonable publicity given to the other's private life, or publicity that unreasonably places the other in a false light for the public. I think the two that are probably most applicable here would be publicity that unreasonably places the other in a false light, or whether there's, is the unreasonable publicity given to the other's private life. One could argue also the unreasonable intrusion upon the seclusion of another, an invasion of their privacy. What I have outlined for you in separate paragraphs is the elements that would be necessary for each of those claims. Those are summarized for you. So there has to be a determination that there has been an invasion, one feels their privacy has been invaded, and in most of these instances, there has to be some evidence that the invasion is such that one can be, that the reasonable man would be seriously aggrieved by what took place and offended by it.
You speak specifically of photograph, may have been taken with town equipment that is used to record events in Cone, Cone, that you don't believe, based upon the information you have, that any recordings of conversations were held. I think that's an important point to bring forth, because it really speaks to the second or third issue that we have to deal with, in terms of which is the operational improvements in the systems. I deduct it, which I know from sitting in this room, that unless microphones are present in the room, and the console is on, there's no way to pick up sound. So if I hit...
Based upon, and I couch this in terms of based upon the information that we have seen to date, based upon the information we have seen to date, there appears to have been, could well have been, a photograph taken in the Cone Room using our equipment, number one. There does not appear to have been the ability, at the time in question, for there to have been a record of any conversations that took place in the room. One would have had to have requested the town to get the microphones and other equipment out of, out of a second room, place it in the room, and then set on the recording system. As best we can tell, based upon what we know now, that does not appear to have been the case. There certainly appears to be a possibility of a photograph.
How do you know that?
I, I base it on having talked with folks that run the operation, and what process there was following. I base it upon the photographs that I have seen. There does not appear to have been any.
Did they explain to you how the equipment was used to even generate a video recording?
They explained, they tried to explain to me. I don't consider myself a technician. They tried to explain to me how the process works if one wants to photograph.
No, but, okay, I understand that. My question is, someone did video recording there. We know that. We don't know whether or not they had sound. Now, you're telling me, and I just want to fully understand what you're telling me, that people explained to you that there could not be sound unless someone had authorized it? But so too, there could not be a video recording unless someone improperly went in there and/or was authorized to do it, correct?
No, that's not quite what I said.
Well, okay, let's take it step by step. Am I correct that you could not have a video recording done in the room unless someone either authorized it, or someone improperly did it? Is that, is that fair?
I think it's fair to say you could not have our equipment used.
Yes.
Unless someone was able to get into the closet, which is outside the room, and operate the recording devices in that room. That is separate and distinct from the recording of conversations.
Okay, let's just deal with that. So someone either authorized someone to do it, or someone did it improperly, correct? Got into the room, correct?
I think, I think that's fair.
Okay, those are the two options. Now, when it comes to recording, you have to have recording equipment, is that correct?
You would have to have...
That's in a second closet.
In a different closet, that is correct.
Someone would have to have authorized it, or someone improperly could have gone in and gotten it, is that correct?
Some, that would also be correct, yes.
Okay. And if they did improperly authorize it, or someone improperly went in there and got it, and placed it in the room, you'd have a recording, correct?
You would have a recording if someone turned the equipment on.
Yes.
But you first would have to get the equipment there. In other words, if there was, if the sound machine was, was not activated.
Yes.
As we well know, using these on a regular basis.
Yes.
You really don't get any sound, or any sound recording unless they are there and operational.
Of course, but if someone did that, you would have sound recording. And if someone did that, it would have been improper, or, or authorized by someone to have done it, correct?
If someone had gotten, either requested, or had gotten the equipment out of the second closet.
Right.
Put it in the room, which is best I know, based on people that were there. No one has mentioned to me that there were any microphones there, or they would have known about it. They would have seen it in front of them. The photographs that I have seen, to the extent that you can see the area in question, there does not appear to have been any, any, any recording equipment, or any microphones, which would have had to have been there.
Wayne, you didn't interview the people who were in that photograph, did you?
I have spoken to some of them, yes.
I know you didn't speak to one, in terms of an interview. You asked whether there were... In terms of an interview, you asked whether there were microphones there? Wayne, did you?
Let me finish. If you look at the photographs, I think that the evidence of microphones would have been evident. I did not see any of them in the photographs.
But you did not ask?
The folks that I have spoken with did not indicate, I did not interview anyone in the technical sense, but I did not see any microphones in the photographs, number one. Number two, in the conversations that I've had, or the correspondence that I've had with individuals, there was no indication of any recording devices that were applicable or there on the day in question.
No one told you of one, but you did not ask anyone, is that correct?
I did not, I made a specific request of how the process is followed.
By whom? I'm sorry.
By the folks that operate the system.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
This is what one would have to do to record. As best I could tell, by looking at the photographs and what would have to have been done to do that, there's been no complaints that there were photographs, that there were microphones there. There does not appear to be any evidence of microphones having been there.
And based on that, you're saying there was no audio recording? Or are you just saying you can't determine at this point that there was audio recording?
Based upon what I know and based upon what I have seen to date, and based upon the process that would have to have been followed to do it, it does not appear to me there is evidence that there was recording.
And the process that had to be followed to do the video recording, was that followed?
To do the video recording?
Yes.
Well, it would appear, it would appear that there's a possibility that the video recording was done. We've seen photographs. So someone took a photograph of something. It appears it could well have been by the use of our equipment, based on what we have seen.
Based on what you've seen, you do know there was a video recording made, is that fair?
I think it's, yes, I think that's fair. I think it's fair to say that based on what we have seen, what has been presented to us, there was a photograph taken in the Cone Room on the day in question, and it would appear there is a good likelihood that that was taken using our equipment. How it was done, we don't know.
Of a video recording, from a video recording, correct?
It would appear that way, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. And that was done by somebody improperly or with authorization, I will get into that later, having utilized that equipment, correct?
Based upon what we know, and keep in mind, as you well know, I have not done an investigation.
I do know that.
I have responded to an FOI request. Based upon the documents that I have seen and the gathering of those documents, it appears that there is a distinct possibility, based upon the angle and looking at the photograph, it would appear that there is a distinct possibility that that was used using our equipment. There is nothing that we have in the information that we have gathered that would suggest that anyone did it with any authority from the town.
Okay. And have you made inquiry on that?
I have, I have gathered documents in conjunction with that.
No, I understand, and I appreciate that. Have you made inquiry on that? Have you asked? Did you ask Peter? Did you ask John? Did you ask Drew Marzullo? Did anyone authorize this?
I gathered information.
That's not my question. Did you ask them? Please, just yes or no. You either did or you didn't.
I have asked for information as to who would have had access to that area on the day in question, based upon the narrowing down of what we believe was the day in question.
That wasn't my question. My question is, did you ask whether or not someone was authorized? And the people you'd have to ask, other than selectmen, did any of them, or did the Board of Selectmen, which I was not a member of at the time, authorize it?
To the best of my knowledge, it was never authorized by the Board of Selectmen.
Did you ask the individuals on the board whether or not they authorized it? It's simple, you either did or you didn't.
I did not, because there was no reason for me to do that.
Well, whether there's a reason or not, you did not do it.
I did not do it, nor should I have done it.
Well, if it was authorized, wouldn't you want to know that?
No, not at this point in time, I wouldn't. That was not what I was asked to do.
Okay.
I was asked to gather information, which I did. I did not do an investigation, so there was no reason or basis for me to say, did you authorize it, or did anyone on this board authorize it?
But you just said a moment ago you understood or operating on the premise that it was unauthorized. And I guess I'm asking you, why do you assume that?
Because there's no information which would suggest that it was otherwise.
Well, if you don't ask the question, there's never going to be information.
There was no reason for me to ask the question.
And therefore, you're ignorant on the point.
I do not know whether it was authorized. There's no information that I have which would suggest that it was.
Okay.
I don't consider myself an authority to be able to grant somebody to use that equipment. I have no control over it, and I do not want to...
Simple. Thank you, John. Peter, did you authorize it?
The equipment is under the auspices of a committee. It's been that way for over a decade, predating my time, and so therefore, I have no ability or knowledge to work any type of equipment.
So, okay, so we now know that it was unauthorized. Neither of these gentlemen authorized it. The board did not authorize it, therefore it was unauthorized, correct?
Certainly unauthorized by this board.
And by anyone on the board?
By anyone on this board, correct.
Are you excluding the former board?
I'm not excluding any member now or previously of the Board of Selectmen. But there were other organizations, the organization that runs the camera equipment, that could have authorized it.
Mr. Marzullo is here, I'm sure he will tell me he didn't do it.
No, I just want to state one on record. I would like to go on record, too. I can say with 100% certainty, GCTV, including myself, did not authorize this.
Simple, thank you. So I think we can all now agree we have an unauthorized recording. Okay. Let me ask you one other question, if I may, a couple.
Certainly.
You did, as you were asked, advise with respect to what causes of action, if any, you thought the individuals would have, correct?
What would be the basic elements of a cause of action? Yes, sir.
Whether they have a claim, of course, or not, is up to them and their lawyers, not up to this board, correct?
That is clearly up to them, that is correct.
And able lawyers like yourself could obviously disagree on whether they did or didn't.
I certainly hope so, or we would be out of work.
And certainly, again, whether they have a claim or don't have a claim is no concern of this particular board at this point. That's up to them to decide.
That would be up for the potential plaintiffs to decide whether they felt there was a sufficient cause of action to institute one.
And so too, with respect to the criminal matter. Whether a crime was committed and who committed it would be a question for the police in the first instance and the state attorney in the second instance, but again, not for this board, correct?
It would be for the, obviously, it would be for the police, the state's attorney, and a judge of the Superior Court.
Ultimately.
To determine whether a warrant should be issued.
Okay.
That would not be a decision made by your board.
Okay, so while you have given us information and your view on the civil and criminal aspects potentially of the events that may have occurred here, that is not anything which we have to act upon. It's not anything that really, we're not responsible for either bringing a civil case on behalf of these individuals or bringing a criminal case if that were appropriate, correct?
That would be correct. You would not bring a civil case, that would not be up to you, and I would not expect, famous last words, that were an action to be instituted. I would not expect that this municipality would be a party to it, but that, again, would be a decision someone else would make.
So, okay, so all of that is nothing we're concerned with. But let me ask you this.
I understand you're concerned with, but it's not a question which you would decide.
Concerned with as citizens, yes, but not anything we have to deal with.
Not one that you would have to decide on, no, sir.
But let me ask you this. We are charged, are we not, as a board, with protecting town property? Isn't that something we do, or is that nothing we do?
I think you have an obligation to see to it how town property is being used, and if, in fact, there is a violation or an inappropriate use of it, you would have the opportunity to make a determination as to what cause of action should be followed and the potential of bringing it to the attention of the police department, who might take a separate action.
Or at a minimum, just remedying it.
If there is a problem, to address the problem, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. With that, Peter, if you, if you want me to do it now, or I could wait till you turn toward new business, whatever you want.
I wanted to, so, can we agree?
Procedureally...
Can we agree there's three parts to this, right?
Articulate them, and then we can either agree or disagree.
There was a discussion about investigation of it. The police department, we now understand, is doing that. There's the law, which Mr. Fox has given us. And then three is where do we go from here going forward? I guess you could say the safeguards. So that process has begun, recognizing that this is primarily a volunteer-run initiative. So I just wanted to share what we do know, which is in our budget this year, separate and distinct from this issue, is there's $225,000 to replace much of the equipment that is in place. Now, how does that relate to this? I think contained within this description in the budget book, it talks about putting in place mechanisms by which people who are at this dais or upstairs know if, in fact, the cameras are on and that the sound is on. We only need to point to the challenges at the BET meeting on the budget where there was little or no sound, but would they know that? In fact, I think Mr. Turner was sitting in the seat, and I came in and I said, folks, you're eating your dinner, it's on television right now, you might want to move. Now, I didn't have to do that, I happened to be sitting in my office watching it, but my point is, they don't know that. And up until today, we were operating with a broken system. Am I correct? We were using alternative mics. So in terms of giving the occupants of the room awareness, I think the new equipment will be coupled with mechanisms that people will know, because we don't. I mean, we go into executive session, and we're trusting, they turn off the picture, and then they turn off the sound. So I think that's part of it, so that's one piece of that. The other piece, and Barbara was good enough to take, information shared with us by Horst Tebby, who happens to be away, he's one of our volunteers, and he's relatively new, I mean, the last few years. And here are the things that he brought forward, because naturally, the folks who are doing this now feel like aspersions have been cast on them. So he wants canceling card key access to the second floor control room for anyone other than the four GCTV committee members and equipment operators. Changing the locks to the control room of the Town Hall meeting room with new keys issued only to the aforementioned four GCTV committee members and equipment operators. Changing equipment closet access to card key only is an option that may need to wait until the GCTV equipment capital improvement project is performed in 1920, which, after July 1, assuming approved by the RTM. If the aforementioned capital project is approved, there would be further restricted access to the GCTV recording camera and audio equipment. Equipment for videotaping and live broadcasting from both the Town Hall meeting room and the Cone Room would be housed in a centralized control room located within the Town Hall meeting room. So as this was explained to me, right now, operationally, you've got two meetings going on, you have to get two people to operate two systems, two different locations. It's a, it's a human equity issue in terms of getting those people. Now, with this, I understand that one person can operate two cameras in the two different, in one location, and they're saying it's down here. The relocation would allow for one camera operator stationed in the control room to simultaneously broadcast, record two meetings in those meeting rooms. Possible installation of video monitors in each meeting room that would notify meeting participants of an on-camera presence. And I think this is what we really need to have happen for many reasons, but this is where our government works, so they need to know, particularly when they use this to do executive session. Investigate the potential to extend the length of time card key access information archived from the current 30-day period. And from what I was told, there's a 180-day period on the ones that we come in the building, different from than the ones that are out the door. That's another change in capital item. So that gives greater data available. And again, this is just a start. Yeah, this, I mean, right, and I just want to be clear, this is not the final solution. This is really the point of departure. I'm not a tech person, so, but I do know that this request has been in the works for several times because of the obsolescence of some of this equipment. And I believe what was failing was the sound, and that's why we had to deal with the auxiliary equipment.
I tend to think if there had been, or if there will be, better records kept, this is not a criticism of anyone, but a better recording of who had access to the closets in question, and a recording of when that person had access to that closet, we wouldn't be here today because we would know in a very narrow scope who was the person there on the day in question. I think that's the basic asset that needs to be corrected.
Do you think, I mean, we have on our entries that the six things that people need to adhere to or know, you know, no firearms, no alcohol, only service dogs, building is under video surveillance, and there's one other. Is there a need to further broad, you know, further publicize that? I mean, they're, they look like they're standardized stickers on the doors, but candidly, it doesn't hit you. Like, you go to some places and it says multiple video surveillance. Do you need to put in more sign? That's not covered here because that's a broader issue.
I don't see any negative in doing that, but I don't think that's the primary deficit that needs to be corrected. Primary deficit, as I said a moment ago, is to know who's in those closets and when and what time, and to keep a record of that for a longer period of time. This would be a very short process if we had that.
And Mr. Tebby, by the way, is willing to come, and Drew, I know you're here, I don't mean to override you because you're kind enough to take your time. He is away, he said he would be happy to, you know, come and talk with us. He's given this thought. He initiated the response as a result of the issues we had last meeting. He had three points. One of them was, what happened last meeting? We couldn't determine whether we were on or off. And then two and three, he talked about how this had bothered him, and here's what he would propose we do, so. So Horst is away, I think he's back next week, the 17th, I think he said.
Well, it seems to me that what you are saying is absolutely correct, that at a minimum, you, we should have records of who can access the room and have a way of both keeping, having that information and keeping that information, so that you can go back and look. Apparently, we don't have that now, and that's why you were kind of stymied in how far you can go with your inquiry.
We don't have it kept for a long enough period of time.
Yeah.
And I don't think, unlike for, you know, police cameras, where the storage of that material can be too difficult, would be, there's relatively limited use of these facilities, comparatively speaking.
So it wouldn't be hard.
The ability to get it and keep it for a relatively long period of time, five years, I'm not going to set the time, but certainly longer than what we do now.
Yeah.
Would provide a treatment of the problem that we are facing.
Absolutely. And by the way, just to Peter's point about cameras, where you see cameras are in use in a small store, where you have a video, a camera up there, a CC camera, telling you that there's a camera on the cash register, and when you're walking around the store, they can see if you're pocketing something or not paying. And that's, it's not, the thought is not that there's going to be cameras throughout Town Hall. There are cameras in selected rooms for particular purposes, not to just surveil people generally, I don't think.
I don't think it's a purpose.
Yeah, that's not the purpose.
Keep in mind, we have only two rooms that have this ability.
Yes.
They are used on a limited basis. Some of our committees use them, some of them use the smaller rooms.
Mm-hmm.
So the amount of material we would have to store would be limited.
Very small. It's small, yeah. It is very small.
Can I raise a question as a citizen on that, on this point?
If you, Ms. Swamley, if you could come forward, please.
I am an attorney, and I have certain views of all of this that I'm putting aside right now. And my question really more is, what is the public policy of the selectmen and the administrators at Town Hall over the use of cameras? And I think that's something that the public has the right to know and an interest in knowing. I've heard it, I'm getting conflicting messages. On the one hand, there's been a suggestion that we are all supposed to expect to be surveilled because of the signs outside, and I don't think that's what is meant, is it? In other words, if you're having a meeting in a meeting room, you don't expect to have a video, to be videotaped, right?
I would say that, I think the notification is for the cameras that are in the hallways, which are on four floors, the basement.
So, there is not, there is not a, there is not a belief on the part of the administration that it is permissible for someone to stick a camera in a room, or otherwise record what's going on in a room in Town Hall, right?
Generally, I would say no, but I do think there are instances where people come into rooms, meetings which you could say are public, and some, like, a group rents the room, or takes out the room, united way, or someone comes in, they take a picture of the people in the room. I don't see that as being an issue because they're in a public meeting room.
Right, but if you reserve a room, you go into executive session, you're conducting regular business for the group that you have reserved the room for, there is an expectation that you're not going to be video recorded.
I think what you're saying, and I think it's consistent with what Peter's saying, is there's no expectation you'd be video recorded by the town or the... is there's no expectation you'd be video recorded by the town or the administration. What Peter's saying is if someone in that room decided to record you, some member of your group, that's nothing we would have control over.
Well, or stay, carrying it a little further surreptitiously. You want to spy on what somebody, what's going on in a room, that wouldn't be acceptable.
Of course not.
Not by us, no.
Okay. So, then the.
May I ask something?
Sure.
Or may I ask something?
How many recording devices are in this room right now? Cameras, cameras can record, can anything? So, I would say more than half of the room is.
Well, I would guess, I would guess a video, this is, yeah, it's capable of recording. Yeah, I assume.
But this is a public meeting. I'm trying to distinguish.
Well, I mean, if somebody walked into a meeting upstairs in one of the meeting rooms inadvertently and took out their camera, or took out their phone and took a picture, I mean, there's nothing you could do about that.
Right. I'm more focusing on the video, I think, at this point. And a question that I have, there's been a statement made that a picture was taken of the recording equipment in the cone room. My understanding is that that picture had to have been taken from a video recording, that you can't, that that equipment does not itself take pictures. It video records, and then a picture would have to be taken of it. That's my understanding.
Just the other mic.
Thank you.
Just one further comment, Peter. I think it should be recognized that the cameras in here are for two different reasons. The ones that the police have in the hallways and in surrounding areas is to keep a record for a limited period of time of who's in the building, whether or not there's a crime going on in the building, which they have used successfully in the past. The ones in the rooms are primarily used for recording events such as this.
Correct.
The rationale and purpose of them is very different. The only other comment I would make, just for the record, because you asked for a summary of what this is all about, not focusing on this cause of action or any potential cause of action right now, this back pattern, where there's a general principle of law. To have a cause of action for a violation of right of privacy, there must be two things. There has to be a reasonable expectation of privacy, number one. Number two, what event occurred would be, and the recording that was done would be highly offensive to a reasonable person. In summary, that's the law, which I explain in lawyer-like fashion in some seven pages, and let you have. That's a summary of what the law is on right of privacy.
Okay.
And the second part of it deals with the potential.
You didn't look at the federal law, did you?
I did.
You did? At 1982?
No, I'm sorry. What was the question again?
I said, did you look at the federal statutes?
I did not.
Oh, I didn't think so.
Great. Thank you very much. Do you, you wanted to say something?
Yeah. First, I think the discussion we had is helpful, and I think it's helpful to know kind of where we are. For me, the issue is town property was improperly used. We now know that whomever did the recording was not authorized to do so. We don't know how they did it, and I don't know who did it. It seems to me it is appropriate and correct to say that the police are investigating who did it and whether that amounts to a crime. I have no interest in interfering with that. On the other hand, and we have no responsibility to follow that, on the other hand, we do have a responsibility, and I am concerned about the fact that town property was improperly used by someone unauthorized to do so. And what I think we have an obligation to do is determine not who did it, I'm not trying to do that, but what are the processes in place? How did they fail us, because they did fail, and how do we remedy them? You have talked about someone coming forth with a proposal as to how to hopefully remedy some or address some of the shortcomings that may currently exist. I don't know the individual. I don't know how he did this. I don't know whether that's complete or incomplete. I know nothing about it. What I would propose, because it seems to me this is our responsibility, knowing what we know, is that we appoint a three-person commission to investigate or look into two things, three things. One, what are the processes currently in place? You may know them, Peter. Others may know them. I don't know that the town knows them. Secondly, how did they fail us? Why were they inadequate? And thirdly, what do we do to remedy them? And I think that is our job. That's what we are elected to do. It is not, I agree to the extent you or anyone has suggested it, it is not to prosecute criminally or to find out necessarily who committed a crime if one was committed, but it is our job to protect the property of the town and the facilities that we're in right here. To do that, we have to know how we failed and how we improve. So, I would like to move and suggest that we appoint a committee. This gentleman who sent this in can certainly be part of it as far as I am concerned. It is, I respectfully submit, I know others don't always agree with me, it is a bipartisan issue. This is not a Republican or Democrat issue. The Republican Attorney General yesterday, Bill Barr, said that spying in a political campaign was a serious matter. He thinks Democrats are spying on Republicans. Here, it may be Republicans spying on Democrats. Either way, we ought to get to the bottom of it, not because of a crime, but rather because our property is being, or has been improperly used, and we have to fix that. So, I would like to move that we appoint a commission, a committee of three, to look into those three things. One, what are the processes? Two, how do they fail us? Three, how do we remedy them? That's our job. That's what I'd like us to do.
So, just, so what are the processes for?
What are the procedures and processes currently in place to secure our town equipment, our town recording and audio and visual equipment? How were those processes inadequate in this case? And what can we do, what should we do to remedy those inadequacies and/or to strengthen it further?
It sounds similar to what we were talking about in the memo that we got from Horst.
Yeah, I didn't get the memo, but that's neither, maybe I didn't see.
It was attached.
Oh, okay.
It's just a summary of.
All right.
Yes.
If the town property were misappropriated and abused, and presumably it was done by someone with access, it could have been a town employee, why wouldn't you want to know that? I mean, if it was unauthorized, why wouldn't you want to know who did it? Because you could conceivably have someone on the payroll that is acting without, you know, going and surreptitiously doing something.
Well, the reason I did not include is because I'm hopeful that the police will determine who did it, and then such steps, if any, will go forward. If the police don't determine who did it, we can always look at it then.
So, one, what are the processes and procedures currently in place, right?
Yes.
Two, how did they fail us? What are the inadequacies?
What, yeah. What happened in effect? How did this happen?
Well, Wayne has sort of alluded to some of it.
Yes.
Three, how do we prevent it from happening again? Remedy, prevent.
Correct.
That's how I see it. So, that motion has been made. Does anyone want to comment?
Yeah, I'd like to comment. I think, and I felt from the beginning, that this issue was improperly before the Board of Selectmen. I have nobody that reports to me. I have no budget. I have very specific duties, and setting up a three-man commission such as this, I don't feel I have the authority to do that.
Well, I guess I would say to you, John, we were elected to do something. I'm not sure what we were elected to do, but I am sure one of the things we were elected to do is to protect the town's property. This involves just that. We clearly can. I don't think there's any question that we have the inherent ability, and if so, we can ask Wayne if you have a question, the inherent ability to appoint a committee to look into this. I mean, it seems to me that if we don't have that ability, we're wasting our time sitting here. We all ought to go home.
Given what we've talked about during this whole meeting here, I think that this, the things that you want to see this committee do, they're already being done. So, we're going to be tripping over each other, and I don't agree with that.
Okay. If they're being done, I don't know it. They're not doing it under our auspices, certainly not mine. So, I think it ought to be done under the auspices of the Board of Selectmen. The Charter provides for a board. The first Selectmen has a number of duties and responsibilities that is clear, but the Charter does provide for a board. There presumably is a reason for that, and presumably that reason is so that we act, and we act to fulfill our obligations, which is to protect town property. That's why I'm asking for, John.
Okay. So, the motion is out there. I would just comment that I do think bridging the issue here, we are in the process of doing several of these things. I think we have a foundation to start. I think having the legal department be part of it is helpful from a, from a protection of assets and that element. I think a technical person is necessary who understands this system. And, you know, I don't know Horst well, but I've seen him resolve problems recently with, what is the, what is the firm we had to call in, Altice, and then somebody with Altice?
DNR.
DNR?
I know.
Yeah. And so, so I'm just thinking, so in terms of, it may not be the same as what you're thinking, but we need technical, legal, and I think somehow operational within the building. So, someone from Public Works, because some of the things that he's talking about are infrastructure to the building. How do you institute the best card key and so forth? So, while I won't second the motion, I will take the motion and act on its intent, which is to put those people together and give us a report.
Before we do that, can I ask Wayne, just so that we have resolved John's concern, Wayne, does this board have the authority to appoint a committee to look into this?
I think this board has the authority to gather information that they deem appropriate for the actions of the town. So, I think the answer would be, yes, you have the authority to gather information, which is what you're looking for.
Yeah. Well, to appoint a committee to do that and report back to us, yes?
I think you could do that.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we had the right to do it.
Okay. So, the motion was made. We reviewed what it is. You weighed in. I weighed in. I would, again, sort of bridge the divide, whether it's appointed or directed, directed through the Selectmen, one, not the other. I would just propose we do it, do it that way. And I, the people I'm thinking of, and I'm open to suggestions, but Horst, Wayne, sorry to burden you, but I think someone from your office should be part of it, and then someone who can understand the infrastructure, and I don't know if that's Public Works. I don't know who that is. Someone outside who does this stuff. I don't know, Drew, if you know of, like, vendors, the vendor, who's going to do, the vendor, who's going to do this? Well, I guess we have to put this work out, right, that's outlined. So, I would propose that be the course of action.
You have to include someone from GCTV operation, remember. Horst doesn't get involved with operations. I think they have to be included.
What does Horst, can you just come and tell us what Horst does?
Will we?
Come up to the mic. Would you please, just?
Horst assists us on everyday editing, camera, et cetera. But in terms of the actual operations, when it comes to scheduling, the allocation of funds, that's not.
Who works the equipment? Like, doesn't Horst know how to work the equipment?
Yes, he's one of two.
And Don?
Three, yeah. And Don, and there's one other.
And this young guy, Sean, who came last time, brand new?
Yes, that's it. To my knowledge, prior to my time, they're.
And then there was Paul.
Yes.
Who was sort of the, gave birth to this whole thing. I mean, I'm just picking Horst because he seemed the most involved in solving the problem, and he, he actually.
From a technical aspect.
He actually unsolicited.
Sure.
Included in the communication that he wanted to see something done because he felt an affront, because he's new to this, relatively speaking, so.
I think that should be discussed whether or not that's him directly. I mean, once again, it's from a technical aspect. I just think he'd be volunteered, which is great.
Someone from GCTV Law and Infrastructure. So, that's, so that would be my reply, Sandy, to it, that we're doing what you want to do, but without necessarily appointing the committee by the board, which you don't want to do.
I appreciate the effort. I just want to make two points. Number one, I think that however it is constituted, this, and I will call it a committee, but you can call whatever you'd like, this aggregation of people.
Ad hoc, ad hoc committee.
An ad hoc committee. Two things. One, it ought to be clear that they ought to report back to us, and we have a responsibility to act if action is required. And two, I strongly suggest, strongly suggest, that somebody or bodies on that committee be new to the, new to this whole thing. You need a new set of eyes, among other things, as to why things work the way they work, how can you change them, were there deficiencies, how did this happen, et cetera. The best way to get to that is someone who hasn't been involved to date, someone who can look at it anew and say, why are you doing this? Because we've done it this way for 40 years, or whatever it may be. I'm making that up.
Just a thought.
I have no objection.
No, just, you know what's a, you know what's a thought? Why don't we ask the Area Non-Cable Council to give us somebody? Because they're the other towns, so they have no, what is it, like, 18 towns or something? I mean, some of those people have been around, like, Jim Cameron is a name I recognize, because we have five seats on there, and they're not, one's from Board of Ed. So, those are, those are the people that run these type of systems throughout the region, and I think maybe that's the, there to go.
If they do that and they report back to us, answering my three questions, that would make me happy.
Right. I have no problem with the questions. I would say that, Barbara, that that's how I'm taking a directive to do that, because I endeavor to see that, so.
I want to say one, I'm sorry, one other thing, just like on the back.
Please come up to the microphone, Drew.
We just need, before we conclude this, I do think there should be a point person, whether that's Wayne, that gets to, you know, once we adjourn here, someone has to follow up, make sure the committee or ad hoc committee is in place through your approval, not approval, whatever. But somebody does have to take a lead to this, though, or it's going to be.
I don't disagree with you, and frankly, I'd rather remove myself from it from that point of view. I'm just saying in terms of.
It's Wayne, it's.
I, I think someone from the legal department should stay with this issue, and then a technical person, Area Non-Cable, you know, Barbara, you're actually one of our representatives, but maybe you can ask them, given what the issue is. So, define the issue and what we're looking to get, and say, would they be willing to volunteer to address this for us? It may actually pave the way for them to put forward some manuals or something on how these things work. And then, again, I don't know if it's the infrastructure in the building. I know Al was trying to explain the access issue from these doors versus your doors, and it's an investment. It's a type of, so.
That I know, sorry. That I don't know, but just, once again, the point, if it's Barbara, if it's Wayne, whoever, if it's Sleppen, Litback, whoever, it does have to assign the people, though, because once again, once we adjourn here, there has to be a point person.
I got it.
That there's follow-up next week, that Barbara said, here are the four people. Let's get started.
So, I will follow up, and I will say this is the people. This is their charge based upon those enumerated points, and there's got to be a reasonable time to complete what they're going to report to us. Okay?
If I could, I'd like to remind the board that we have people that are waiting for interviews.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So, thank you. So, the.
So, we have a motion. Are we going to have a second or a vote?
There's no second to it. I'm taking it as a directive, meaning some, you know, I'm recognizing it for what it is. Okay, there's no further old business, new business. We have appointments and nominations. There are, I believe, six people waiting for us, beginning at 11:00. So, at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for two purposes. One, to interview candidates for nomination to boards and commissions, and then to discuss pending litigation and settlement of claims, for which we have one that I'm aware of.
Move.
Without objection. Okay, this is a resumption of the regularly scheduled meeting for April 11.
A motion.
A motion to go into public session, without objection, 1217. Several matters, the first being a settlement of a real estate property appraisal. There was one. This is, yeah.
This is for graphic number HHB TV 17-6039355. It's parcel number 12-2370S. And this is for a tax credit of approximately $746 against future tax payments. And if the plaintiffs were to have prevailed the trial, they would have been entitled to a cash refund of approximately $2,542 plus interest and costs.
Move to approve.
Without objection. There are a number of nominations, but in the essence of time, I would suggest we. I would suggest we schedule a special meeting to vote on those positions that are before us.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
And the vote is?
All in favor?
Yeah.
And motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Without objection.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right.